Call the meeting order at seven o'clock.
Dan for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We're actually going to move it around a little bit instead of having the public hearing first because we're waiting on one person and I think the township people are here, we should jump ahead to that one. So we're going to head, move ahead to number four, reviewing the contract with the townships.
So attached, I mailed a copy of the proposed contract to the townships, the city council you saw at the last council meeting. Basically, the three-year contracts that we have, that we are proposing have a few changes in it from the previous contract to the one obvious change are the dates. So in section two of the contract, we're looking at 2022 through 2024. And then in the section that talks about the vehicles, we just updated the rescue truck that we recently received. And then in section seven, which is on the second page, here's where we talked about the splitting up the cost between city and rural. And based on the historical formula that we've been using over the years, this contract proposes that 25% of the operating budget be charged to the townships versus 27%, which is in the current contract. So the township percentage did decrease a little bit. I did attend the Alton Township meeting on November 3rd. Wednesday, first Wednesday of November. For those that are here, are there any questions about the contract itself?
This is the same as it was, only updated for dates and specific.
Yep.
I'd move we adopt this.
Are there any questions at township? Do you have any questions or concerns? Joe, Kett.
Kett, all in favor of accepting the contract as written?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carries.
Can we possibly get the names of all of them?
Absolutely. Can we get everybody's names for the minutes?
Brian Millstedt, Jingle Township.
Mary Slalom, House of County.
Township Alton.
Kurt Anderson, Lira Ray Township.
I think that's it. Okay. Mark, do you have anything?
Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming. You're welcome to stay or bail. It's up to you guys. We won't hold it against you either way, so. Thanks for coming, guys. We'll just keep going and we'll save the public hearing for the end.
Sure, that's fine.
Approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look it over?
I just had one quick update in the administrative report. That's not your memo, but we'll get that when we get there.
Kett.
Make the motion to approve the agenda, moving the public hearing to the last before the adjournment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Second?
I did.
Consent agenda.
Yes, okay. You have the minutes from the November 8th council meeting. You have the accounts receivable and the accounts payable for tonight's meeting. Andrea, do we have, do we get counts?
I didn't, I didn't add it in here, but.
It's possible that we may give the invoice from last week's painting from the Collins Brothers. If that's the case, if you're okay if we can include that in payables before they go off tomorrow.
Did we have any type of bid on that or we just hired them and said, get it done?
They gave, they did give us a bid.
Okay.
Nothing to point out on the payables unless someone has questions. On the receivable side, you could see that from your last meeting that you guys approved the annual transfers. That's on there. And then the JAGA portion, which part of it you're going to approve tonight for a donation and the others that they gave this year's portion for the mower. So that's on there as well.
I see you got number 440, playground equipment is $21,000 over what was budgeted. Can you explain that?
That was, as we were at the park board here tonight, we were talking about that $21,000 was the invoice for the.
Okay.
And it shows over Jim because in those reserves, we never budget. Like, we don't put budgets in for those.
Just wanted to see, it said $21,000 out of budget, but I wanted to make sure that that's where it was.
And that's part of the funds that we've already received for the Veterans Amphitheater.
Yep.
The total of that was around 30,000 that we had?
Yep. I think there's about a little over $3,000 that's left for the amphitheater right now in that fund. Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
Good job, Jim. You read the packet.
Yeah, well, who'd have thought?
Anything else you want to talk about, Andrea?
I don't have anything unless anyone has questions.
There was an EDA storefront grant that is paid out to UC Lab.
Which they, yeah, they approved.
Which was approved your.
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda with adding the Alton painting bill on as long as it's to what the bid was.
Within reasonable what the bid.
Within reasonable what the bid was. There wasn't any.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public forum? Anybody here wish to speak through public forum? No public forum tonight? Notice of communications?
Yeah, I just.
I see we got some stuff.
Yeah, in front of a few of yours, some magazines that we've recently received in the mail. That's all I have.
Council reports. I know we had a couple of meetings tonight.
West Spring Creek is at a close to break even year. We did find out that PPP money does not have to be repaid. They finally got word on that, so that makes up for some of the losses through COVID that we weren't sure we had to repay back or not until.
Oh, they were budgeting that we had to pay back.
Yeah, we were budgeting as if we had to pay it back and being conservative.
Mark.
But found out we don't have to, so that helps. Census is a little bit low right now. They are trying, had four people either move out or aren't there anymore since Friday, but they have enough inquiries that they should be back up in the 30 range here shortly. It's where they targeted, but employees we have, that's about the most we can have. We like to keep available for, if there's anybody local, means as a city-owned, we want to make sure that anybody local needs the services that they're available to them too. So we try to balance that act of keeping it full, but having room for somebody that's local too. But they're, for the year, they're doing pretty well because of that PPP money.
How short on staff are they?
They're short, as if almost every employer out there is short. The nursing home is feeling it a lot and they're not the only ones. The legislators do have some relief, hopefully, coming in the first part of the legislation session for wages and the governor just signed a deal for bonuses for retention and recruitment of nursing home employees, but I don't know how that works with being government-owned. We got to look into that, how that works.
One, like you said, like the staff shortage. By law, you have to have so many staff per resident ratio.
Yes.
So it affects everything. It's shutting down nursing homes and assisted livings all over the state. So I really hope that we can get it figured out.
It's not just a local problem.
No, it's everywhere. It's everywhere. It's really scary, actually.
Well, that's what's going on at West Spring Creek.
Jim, may I talk about the park board?
Well, yeah, well, actually, I'll, first of all, go with the assistant.
Park road?
Park road. And they had a nice meeting the other day, had a very interesting discussion about policy of different things. They are, this new lady that came on is just animated and pushing social programs. They got parties going on and they got events and they got gatherings. So it's a very active group where for the past year and a half or two years, they said they haven't done much of anything. And now in the next six months, they've got just stuff planned everywhere. So it's a really nice, nice thing. The park board met first meeting tonight. It was very well received. I thought it was animated. The people spoke well. We've got a pretty good plan in place for going forward. We're going to meet monthly rather than bimonthly from January through April. So we're hoping to nail down any projects that we want to do for the summer and move forward. Very animated group. Also, I talked to Clinton that we had one member that was elected or that was nominated or that was appointed that is moving out of town. And I suggested a new individual for that. And that will come up to our next meeting, correct?
What if we make our appointments?
Appointments for upcoming boards for 2022?
Yes, that will come up at that. So I was very pleased with the personnel that came on to the park board. I think they're strongly dedicated to the system, park system and Jainsville. So, thanks.
Kett, anything else? Our last CDA meeting was canceled due to some COVID issues here at City Hall, so we'll have another on December. Administrative reports.
All right, attached in your packet is the cash balance dated last Friday. Also attached in this report, Jason Moran and Marty, thank you for the two of you putting your heads together. They put together a letter that they sent to the Sextons seeking their interest in selling a portion of their property for the safer routes alternative. I'll let you know when we hear from them. I guess we really haven't heard anything yet, so. The boards and commission applications, we were just talking about this. The notice will be in the newspaper beginning this week. It'll run three different consecutive Wednesdays. At the December 13th, is it, yes, December 13th council meeting, you will appoint board members for next year. City hall improvements, we painted last week. We started ripping, we, the contractors started ripping up carpet today. We're going to hit this room tomorrow, I believe. And throughout the week, we will be getting the flooring put in. As we discussed last council meeting, we basically, while council will be closed on Friday, because we won't have a surgery or anything here beginning Wednesday afternoon. As far as the HVAC improvements, we are waiting for the material to be delivered, so we'll just work with scheduling when, when that gets here. Anybody have any questions? It's been quite interesting. We forget sometimes what paper went in what box, but we eventually find it. It's going pretty well so far. Park board recap, Jim, you just did a great job on that.
What did you think?
Say you did a great job on that.
Oh, I got to listen more intently.
No, it's good me, good list, good things to look at, so it'll be good. Monday evening, next Monday evening, the school contacted me last week. They have on their calendar a joint meeting with the city council and the school board. Can we do that at 7:00 PM on Monday night at the school?
I'll make it.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no good.
I think it's your word, yeah.
Traditionally, we've always met jointly on the fifth, the month of the fifth Monday.
Yeah.
To do a joint, normally it's two a year, I think.
And who will be present?
The school board. School board, probably the principal, superintendent, event, us.
Good.
So yeah, look for that agenda packet. You're probably going to get it Wednesday because obviously with the holiday on Thursday and us being closed with no coffee machine on Friday, you'll probably get the agenda in a couple of days, so. The only other update I have for you here quickly is that Nate, Joe and I on Wednesday morning were going to be going over to the Baltimore Bank offices. We're having kind of a preliminary meeting for next summer's street project, just kind of looking at some ideas and scheduling. We plan on having the open house for residents probably mid-December here because in theory, everything will be done by them. So we'll be able to host the open house here. And then just talking a little bit with Joe and Nate and Femoright today, I don't know if they've scheduled it yet, but they will be videoing sanitary in the upcoming weeks here on Long Island Street and East Street. That always gives us a good idea of what's needed underneath there, so.
Videoing the sanitary main as well as individual service lines.
Yes.
Tools pinpointed, nowhere that are at, just kind of a plug play thing that comes back for construction. In the past, there have been services that have gotten missed. So that's kind of why we're recommending a little bit of our project.
And Jetter Clean will work on that. Femoright was working with Ron Thomas on that today, so. That's all I have for administrative reports.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business, storm and sanitary sewer budgets.
Yes, let me flip this around so you can see it.
Trying to get it started.
I do have to apologize on the sanitary budget. That column says 2021. It's supposed to say 2022. My bad. Sorry about that. So attached right now for review tonight, we have the storm sewer budget as well as the sanitary budget. Really, the biggest changes from this current year's budget would be debt service that we have in both budgets. And then also in the sanitary sewer budget, the AMI, the infrastructure improvements that we're having with the metering and then some lift station improvements as well. Thank you to Andrew and Joe for putting these budgets together. Do you guys have anything to add? I mean, I know I didn't say much of all of them.
Neil, the only thing I'll add is in the sanitary sewer, we have started to split health insurance between public works and sewer now. So you'll see that health insurance is budgeted in, yep, $17,000 there.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
So line item under the storm sewer, 37200, that's quite a significant increase. What is the?
From 2020 are you talking about?
Oh, wait, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the midway. Never mind. Forget I said anything.
Okay.
It's actually identical.
Yeah, just to add, like you said, the AMI, I think the number three came up was for 125. That's for next year and then a year after that.
Yep. That'll be, yeah, two years.
Yeah.
If you remember back, you guys approved helping contribute to.
That was 50%?
Water meters, 50%. Yep, because sewer gains their revenues off the water meters, so.
And then another capital improvement, just to kind of touch base on, down on our main lift station, it's getting kind of old. So we have four pumps that sit down in that well down there. They all sit on a base elbow. The base elbows are starting to show some wear, so that's a proposed improvement that I'd like to see next year is, basically, we'll stop the flow, get back trucks in to handle the waste, but then we'll send a crew down to replace check valves, base elbows, and then we'll also be looking at probably replacing one of the pumps that are in, one of the four pumps down there too.
How long of a process is that?
What's that?
How long of a process?
It's been a quad flag, it'll help you two a day, so.
So they'll be operational again at night?
Yep, correct.
So then at our next city council meeting, December 13th, we'll be adopting the entire city budget, so include these, these two utility budgets as well.
Obviously, I don't know too much about sewers, but then it says under sewer tabs installed, we adopted 700 in 2021. But, and I'm assuming it's supposed to say 2022 under that. There's, okay. And then we didn't increase that budget? Is that just kind of a fluke for the 3750 or?
What's the new home?
We didn't increase it because, I mean, this year we're kind of getting at a max of the lots that are getting used up, so.
Just wanted to make sure you had enough if that was the case, but.
On the revenue side, we try to be as conservative as, if we're higher, great, but.
So it's just kind of like a crazy year and that's what that is, the estimation for?
Okay. We typically budget two to three just to be on the safe side.
Sure.
So the last few years, we haven't had as many home permits as we have been getting, so.
I guess that's a good problem to have, right? Otherwise, I don't.
You're fairly satisfied with this budget, Joe?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're talking both sanitary and storm here, right?
Yep. And with the storm, I'll just touch base on that a little bit. I'd like to do some ditch maybe next year, just kind of looking ahead. Down on West Street, off the channel just kind of get someone there to clean that out, so. That's on the radar.
What's the telephone light item?
God, it's been police cell phone, man. So you have to.
Oh, are we just charging it then? Or was it coming from a different budget?
It's been coming from different.
Okay. Gotcha.
That, yeah, that's actually for the alarm systems on the lift stations.
I know we've been trying to separate out the categories a little more this year, so it's just.
That's what that is.
Gotcha. Makes sense.
I guess I'll stick to the cell phones.
No, it's the alarms. Frontier.
I think that was all I had for questions. Pretty simple. Straightforward budget.
All right.
Don't get, thank yourself for the minute.
Okay, moving on. Looks like we have a cemetery maintenance contract here.
Yeah, cemetery contract is up this fall. We submitted those RFPs. We did receive one RFP from our current person that does the maintenance contract with us, Marty Erdman. He filled out the RFP for $8,000. Previous contract that we're in now is 6,500 and Joe and I actually budgeted 7,500 in next year's budget. You know, we kind of assumed it was predicted it was going to fill up. So his, his bulk came in at $8,000. We can talk about that. We can also talk about the simple fact that if you want employees to kind of take over that responsibility, if we do that, it would be, you know, the part-time help in the summer that could help us with that. We'd have to get some equipment, make some considerations on that as well. So what else you got, Joe?
Yeah, that's all it. Probably have to, because our mowers currently are a little heat heat and just with the spacing of the stones, it doesn't fit down every row. So we would probably have to look at, if we were to perform it, pretty purchasing on other mowers specifically for that. Because I was out there this afternoon with ours and I could fit down most of them, but it's just a matter of, do you guys think our time would be spent better elsewhere or should we?
What's your opinion on it, Joe? You're the one that's out there. You're the one that does it. The $1,500 increase probably isn't that big a deal. I don't think he's raised his rates in the last few.
Not for the last couple of rounds.
Right. So what, I guess it comes down to what you think as far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
I guess my thought process on that, Joe, is I'd rather have you guys concentrate on parks and road maintenance and that type of stuff. I don't want that put on the back burner to get the, to make the cemetery look nice. And it's, you only got so much time in a year to get that stuff done.
I have to agree with you. I think I'd rather have them do what, they're busy enough with stuff already. I don't, I don't know that we need to add that. That's a pretty, that takes a lot of time.
Is that a couple of days a week, you think, Joe? Two full days for one person?
Probably, yeah, one, one and a half, probably sure. In the non-season, of course, you know, if it's a little drier, of course.
Right.
It's not something that you can just like quickly go through. You have to take your, it's not something that you can quickly go through. You have to take your time. Like, people are coming out there to pay respect, so.
The trimming will be more than the mowing. Trimming is almost twice as much as the mowing. I, I think, I think I'd like to go with Marty. I just don't think that our people need to spend that time out there.
I'd rather pay someone to take their time and do a good job out there.
I would motion that.
There we go.
Perfect. I'll second.
All in favor of awarding Marty the bid at $8,000? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Designating a new polling place. We're not a new, but a polling place, period.
The state law states that we need to designate our polling place for our upcoming election, which is in 2022. So the resolution states Trinity Lutheran Discipling Center, where we have, you know, have passed elections.
That's going to be a, hopefully a dumb question, but have we talked to them and they have agreed to it?
Yeah, no, they're, they're okay with it, yep.
Perfect. I'll make a motion.
Do they go by Trinity Lutheran Discipling Center or can we put church? Because a lot of people were like, where's the discipline center? Like, at a quick glance.
We have to call the tech.
We have to.
Run into that in the past, that's what it's.
Can we put like parentheses or something? I had a lot of people wondering where the discipline center was in Janesville and I like.
Well, I know, but it, I mean, it's technically what it's called, a property. So we, I mean, it has to be named that in the resolution.
Right. In the paper though, or when, yeah, like when we're saying, hey, here's where it is. Maybe in parentheses, put church.
Well, yeah, and then it, and Joe too, was that it, it's not a discipline center, it's a discipling.
I know. I know. I think it was just like.
Sometimes my parents disciplined me. I thought they were the disciples, but they, that's a different story.
Because a lot of people were like, where's this discipline center? I'm like, what are you talking about? And I was like, there's a discipling center and.
Counseling and four or five years of experience. You'll get over that. I would move we, we put it there.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But yeah, we can lean in.
Yeah, please.
Put the, is that dress or something in there too?
Yep.
Address is always on there, so, yeah.
Donation from.
Andrew, I gave it to you.
Yeah, I've got it. Yep. Donation from JAGA?
Yes, JAGA has donated $2,000 towards the city. We, I suggest or recommend that we place it into the golf fund.
Any special designation or just general purpose?
Well, Jacob worked on a couple of buildings this summer. Well, Jacob worked on a couple of outbuildings this summer, so we can maybe use that.
And Jacob worked on what?
Couple of outbuildings out there this summer, did a couple of repair, little repair work, so we can use it for that.
Just in my opinion, I'd like to designate it toward the tee box expansion. But that's just my, I don't know if Andy, did they discuss that at the park, at the golf committee or not?
Um, we can run that by Scott, does that need to be... Can, what do you mean by expansion?
There are multiple boxes that are way too small, and they get chewed up really bad during the year. If we put $2,000 toward a golf, the tee box expansion, maybe next year we have another $2,000 or $3,000. In four or five years, we can actually make some of those tees bigger so that it wouldn't get chewed up during the year, and it'd be easier maintenance. That's my thought.
Could designate that to the tee box?
Why don't we just designate it to the, wherever the golf board sees need for it?
Andy, you, you good with that?
I, yeah, I guess, I'd let Jacob kind of make that call, he's the...
Yep, you know, wherever they, wherever they see...
Wherever they see they most need for it.
Okay. I just think it's being neglected that there's a need out there, and it isn't being addressed, that's all.
Did you make a motion to accept it?
I did not.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept it to be used as the golf board sees fit in the golf line.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nate. Nice to have a dissenting one.
Yeah, once in a while, you gotta throw one in there.
Nice to have a little drama.
Up next, we are gonna jump back to the public hearing now. So it's 7:33, we're gonna open the public hearing for the tax abatement.
So on your screen is the resolution. We are required by law to have a public hearing when we do receive applications for this abatement program. So the resolution identifies those properties that have applied. The resolution also states that the program that was, that began in 2015 is the same. We've made no changes to it. We just need to, by a public hearing and by resolution, identify the properties, and we're supposed to, we are, yeah, we're supposed to ask for public input on it as well. Marley, do you have anything else to add?
I think...
Just on the...
Object on that? First of all, I would like to speak at first, and we received applications and gotten this one, just from the start in 2015. We received 16 or 17. So, yeah, there's a significant amount of...
Those are the addresses that are in flight?
Addresses. It remains just the city, the increase in the city portion of taxes, which is going on, it still funded a lot in only for a period of five years.
And this isn't a set aside, this is a reduction, not a complete...
Reimbursement, they have to pay in full to the county, and then at the end of the year.
And there are some, there are some rules too, that you have to have their utilities paid, and a few other things that have to...
Yes.
And this is, you would recommend passage of this?
Okay.
Nice to see that many on there, I've never seen that many on there before.
Yeah, this is like the most. Here's past, we had one or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This falls into our housing study and running short in lots in Janesville.
Yes.
Do we want to read the addresses for the record or anything, since we're in a public hearing, or...
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't think so, they're probably...
Copy.
Published in the paper.
Yep.
Copy can be requested if they want.
I move we adopt this.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will close the public hearing at 7:35.
I love to have a public hearing, a lot.
You do love a public hearing.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?